Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Bennington Select Board meeting. It's May 21st, right? And sorry for the delay. We had some interviews with some commission and committee member applicants. But we are convening at the Bennington Fire Facility for our meeting that would normally occur next Monday, right?
It would normally happen.
Yep. But seeing Memorial Day, decided to come and interrupt our enjoyment at the board level. We wish everyone will have a good cookout, anyway, on next Monday. But I'm Tom Jacobs, and I'd like to have my colleagues introduce themselves, starting with Nancy Lively, who is our esteemed reporter. Thank you, Nancy.
Nancy Lively, secretary.
Chad Gordon.
Hi, Jeannie Jenkins.
Good evening, I'm Donald Campbell.
I'm Jim Carroll.
Carson Thurber.
And Gene Connor.
And I'm Stuart Hurd.
Great. Thanks, Stu, and all. As is our practice, we open with a pledge of allegiance, and actually, the flags are right behind us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The minutes of the May 14th meeting were circulated separate, I think. I believe everyone got a copy of those. I will entertain a motion to accept the minutes of May 14th, 2018.
So move.
In a second. Questions, comments, corrections? I look to.
There were some spelling errors, but I'll -- it's -- don't worry about it. There's no way for you to know how these people spell their name. There's no possible way, so, don't worry about it.
Having heard the comments, are we all in favor of the minutes of May 14th? If so, signify by aye. Seven in favor, and no opposition to the minutes being accepted. Our citizens' comment period? If anyone has signed up, do we have a sign up sheet?
They have signed up.
Okay. Now, is this part of the citizens' comment, or is this the president's?
This is the citizens' comment. Just that the lights, the Grove Bennington Initiative, the lights and the banners were a winter project.
Yes.
I just wanted to give you a 90-second update of taking those down.
Got it.
So, um, so the banners, you can see now, they're up in the springtime, and so, we really had planned those to be a winter dreary season project. I did want to just show you these because Greg Nesbit took these for us and has offered to let the town, the chamber, anything in Marketing Bennington, to be able to use those. And so, we're looking at taking the banners down and then taking the lights down. You can see how they're up in the winter.
Could you leave the blossoms up?
I know. This is one with the blossoms.
Yeah, right.
But it is time. You can see there's a lot of tree growth there, and so, we're looking at taking those down. I think Dan had talked to Pembroke about, as much as we'd love to leave them up, there's tree growth issues and whatnot. So, here's the plan. If we remove them, Chad pointed out to me that that's Father's Day. Actually, the 16th is when we're looking at removing the tree lights, and then to reinstall, basically, in the October-ish timeframe. And then, the banners, we wanted to check with the town on removing in late June, because there's the tradition of having the American flags, and those are the same posts that we use. So, we just want to make sure that everyone's okay with me take those down in late June, put the flags up, and then we reinstall the banners again in October. So, a little change of scenery.
Makes sense. They're first time up, and they're really impressive, and I think they're pretty effective, because you've got different schemes, you know, different color schemes across the four quadrants, which are pretty impressive.
Yeah, and it'll extend the life of the banners, too, by taking them down and doing what we always do with the beautiful flags and flowers and all that good stuff. So, we'll just work with Stu then on coordinating taking them down.
Lynn, I'm sorry to hear that you're going to take the lights down.
I know, I want to thank you.
I really am. And you don't think you could get away with it? I don't think there's going to be that much growth in those trees, and they're so pretty.
It is.
Lighting the underside of the canopy of the leaves, I think, would just be beautiful.
I'll defer to my engineering types here.
We have definitive answer from our forester, and so, progress is not helping for the trees.
But, if I'm not mistaken, there's a plan for additional lighting off-season that'll actually probably meet Jim's concern, right, relative to lighting? It may be down the road.
Yeah, and we are all volunteers. We're working really hard to try to get that done this summer, to do at least a few trees with uplighting, but we're kind of working on that.
And we're not even sure of the plan. It's something that we're creating as we're doing it. There won't be the, like, a permit install uplighting, which is our long-term goal, but we're looking for a temporary installation in the tree that will light up the canopy, hopefully, as nice as the wrap lighting is.
The way that you currently have it configured, you know, you've got the extension cords that you could, you know, the uplighting could be plugged into the ground. Wouldn't be as permanent, but it would underlight the canopy.
Yeah. So, we're going to try something this season, but it won't -- we have a long-term RPI. We had talked with them about doing a master plan for lighting the trees downtown, but that would include installing conduit to each tree, so that there is an outlet, we don't have to run cords anymore. But this season, if we do it, it'll be something that will put some kind of unit right up in the tree, use that existing orange down.
Because I just think it, just that lighting alone just invites people to walk in the downtown, especially during the evening hours. I know that I've enjoyed it, just getting out and looking at the lights.
Well, you're making a good point, as far as just trying to get that uplighting, at least for some of the trees, done by the June 16th date that we'd be taking these down or shortly thereafter. And then certainly, this year, we'll get them back up in October. Last year, they were working in the freezing cold in December, January, but we're ahead of the game this year, so they'll be back up as it gets dark again.
Well, thank you, Lynn, and for everything that you've done and your organization. I'm very grateful.
I just want to make two comments. You know, we shouldn't forget that there's not as much, days are much longer in the summer, so we won't miss the lights on the trees as much as we would miss them in the winter. And for me, while they're absolutely beautiful, when they come down and go back up, it'll be like something brand-new again. And to me, it makes it more special, that they're not up all the time.
Doesn't the football team need the exercise, anyway?
Well, I was just going to say, I'll be in touch about June 16th. We'll definitely help take them down. I'm hoping late October, we'll be preparing for a state championship, and we won't be able to help you. So, we'll see with that.
We'll still be doing it in November, so.
Yeah.
We just want to thank the town for all the support, and Stu especially, so, thank you very much. All right.
Thanks. Pat Kenny, you had signed up. Hi, Pat.
Hey. I just got a couple of questions. There are a lot of rumors out. Have we got the permits for the new salt shed over there yet?
We do have permits.
Are we going to use it?
All the permits have been granted. We still have to work to pave the apron to divert water away from the wetlands buffer, and we have to paint it.
So, you can use the salt shed next year?
Yes, we can.
Because I read in the paper where you're going to sell Depot Street in Orchard Road.
Well, we're taking requests for proposals on whether, on what people might do with them, whether it's a purchase or a lease, we don't know. That'll be presented at some point in the future.
Because at Depot Street, you've got 1.16 acres there. That take up the whole parking lot?
No, we're just looking at the building itself, the footprint.
Ooh, that's 885 feet by, oh, anyways, 131 square feet. That's not 1.2 acres, is it?
I wouldn't.
The sad thing is, are we going to sell any of that parking lot? Because we've got a big venture going out at the Putnam Hotel.
No.
We need downtown parking.
I don't think it's our intent to sell any of the parking lot. There may be a proposal that requests for limited restricted parking along the building, as we have done in the past with our own facilities and our own employees, but we don't know what we're going to get.
Well, it's good to get out of there, because that wasn't a hazard, I'll tell you. I smashed into a car when I was working there.
We're three amen.
But, I'm just curious, how much maintenance is going to be on that new building you folks bought over there? With all the water and the ground and everything? I'm sorry, I think you made a mistake. You'd been better off knock Willa Road down and put a nice new garage right there with your salt shed and sand shed, right there. That's all. I guess I'm the only one that's talking about it. There's a lot of people outside that are jabbering, not saying anything, but I came to talk to you, and I think it's crazy to be over in the swine.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Pat.
Can you put my name on the list?
I think I have it right here. Mike? No, go ahead.
He's, he's. No, yeah, I probably didn't get the, she came up here, must have been earlier on.
My voice carries. Couple of things. One, I wish Dan Monks would please stop bothering the ice cream lady. I just heard her today in her, she complained to me yesterday, or the day before, that he's bugging her again about her music, which I think is very spring-like and appealing. So, if you lay off her, I'd appreciate it. And then, the other thing is, I hope people vote no on this option tax thing that's coming up on June 5th. I think the public has not been, as you probably know my feelings on that one, well-informed, and could be a lot of danger down the road. The other thing is, when is the Select Board going to have Bill Colvin in front of the board, again, to talk about, well, two things. One, about the Putnam block, so we know, are we moving with it? Are we not moving with it? I hear they might not even do Phase 2 now, there's a lot of rumors out there, blah, 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 blah. And then, explain to the public about the TIF. How much did we get for the TIF? When are we going to vote for it? Can we use the TIF if we don't do the Putnam block?
Those are, you know, all good questions, as to the.
You know, no offense, I mean, you guys, I haven't been here in a long time, it was snow and all that stuff, but some of your meetings, I wish you'd also make it so you put your citizens up front, your town manager report up front, so you get rid of the citizens' business. And then, if you've got something like the Shires or other things at the end, that really, the everyday people of Bennington that vote for you and pay taxes here, they'd like to know what's going on, and I think it gets too confusing. But if you had the front part of your meeting, the people's business, that's what you're here for, I think that would help us all out.
You know, we've talked about moving agenda items around, and that's one of the things that would make a lot of sense, because I'd like to see it up front, so.
The town manager's report, I mean, he's.
Yeah, it gives us the idea of what's happening in town.
Yeah, he says things that are important once in a while, and you don't know until the end of it, you know? Once in a while, he says it, other times, it's, you could leave it right off, but.
I can't take care of Dan's issue with the ice cream truck, but hello there, hello there. The, you know, it's fun, she does a fun job.
Yeah, but if you're going to do that, then start doing something about all the cars that race up and down Gaines Street with no mufflers and everything else, that lift you right off the bed, the chair, the couch. I mean, if it's a decimal thing, sound. I mean, a little thing saying, hello, I got ice cream, it's springtime. She's only here, like, three, four months, she had three days a week, she's trying to make a living, the kids enjoy it.
Yeah, when I was a kid, I looked forward to that, you know?
Yeah, you did. You were a kid?
Yeah. You know, but that was when the horse and buggy didn't make that much noise.
No.
You know?
You had to pick up after the horse.
Yeah. The other thing, relative to the vote on the charter change and your issue, because I saw your commentary in the banner yesterday, I can assure you, and we will talk about it, I think, on the? Fourth? Fourth?
The 11th.
No, no, the fourth.
The second is the budget meeting.
No, June.
No, June 4th.
He wants to have an.
June 4th, we're going to be having an informational meeting again. I'm trying to be responsive to those questions and concerns that by voting for the charter change, you're voting for a sales tax, and you and I know that is not the case. That's actually a vote by the town at some given point, if the town decided it wanted to.
Similar to what you tried to pull on my mayor issue, that was the first vote. And by the way, the mayor issue will come up again, there's going to be a meeting sometime in June, explaining the new petition, and it's going to cover all the bases that everybody was squawking about before.
That's good. That's why we have a democracy. Mike, what's, what was the other question? I think there was another.
Putnam Block.
Oh, the Putnam Block. We're all, you know, anxiously awaiting, you know, a report as to when and how and when that's going to happen. The entire community is expecting that. I'm certainly, you know, hoping that bill will come before the committee, excuse me, the Select Board, but also the entire community, just like he did when we had that presentation at Old Castle. And I hope the Old Castle-type presentation will be roundly applauded by the community. So, it is still a private venture, as far as.
Well, it's not really a private venture.
Let me just, let me finish my comment, since I'm, you know, citizens' comment and exchange. The TIF is basically a tool. We, until we actually have the project, the town can't vote on it, because we don't know what the infrastructure needs are going to be. Until they come and present that, the Select Board will hear what are the needs from the developer, and the town has to actually vote on an infrastructure bond. We're, I think, at least Phase 2 away, maybe, whatever that means. It's not something that's imminent. I don't expect that's going to be part of Phase 1. Because, like you, I would like to see some scaffolding going up, and then we can decide how the community responds to it.
One more question, well, on this project. In Phase 1, can that be done without improvement, Stuart, to the downtown infrastructure, the plumbing and the pipes and?
Yes.
Could that hold it without it?
That is the plan.
That's the plan, but can it hold it? I mean, Kerry Morris came in front of you guys three, four years ago, and said the pipes were ready to pop any minute downtown.
Well, I'm not sure that that's an accurate representation of what he said, but, no, there are no infrastructure improvements planned associated with Phase 1. Our work, I think, will begin when Phase 2 comes along.
And if Phase 2 never happens, and they just sell the property outright to different entities, we, could we still get into that TIF money?
Yes. Basically, a TIF money is not really money. It, basically, the entire area that TIF has been designated, which is a good part of our downtown community, would be available for development, and then we'd have to go and bond that infrastructure improvement. So, hypothetically, that Putnam project doesn't ever get to Phase 2. There are other parts of town which could and should be developed. Yeah.
And how much is the TIF worth that we got?
Well, the TIF really depends on the cost of the infrastructure improvements that are associated with the development that they are tied to. So, theoretically, it's millions, but it really depends on.
Is it six or seven million, or?
Or more.
It could be more, so you can't go after more?
Yes.
Well, it's what the citizens of Bennington will support in order to see development occur in the TIF district, which is principally the downtown plus a little bit. So, if the public says, yes, spend 12 million in order to get this project built, then we'll spend the 12 million.
Well, I really do believe you need to be a little bit more open and get this group to start being more open about what they want to do, how far along they are, because St. Albans didn't do it this way at all. I talked to people up in St. Albans, they sent me all their stuff. They voted, the people voted for $43 million TIF.
Yeah, and a good part of that.
No, they did it up front because it was, it was basically one project.
No.
Which involved, well, which involved a number of parties.
Right.
Moving about. I mean, they had the state of Vermont involved, they had a major industrial company involved, they had the town involved. So, there were entities all moving, but it was basically all, all at once. We're probably not going to be moving in that, in that way, I wouldn't think, but we'll have incremental development, we hope. Once the, once the Putnam redevelopment takes place, I think you'll start to see other activity in the downtown. We have a number of locations that are ideal for development, and there's infrastructure improvements to go with all of them.
I think it's confusing, I think people are under the impression, and rightly so, I guess, because it's so confusing, that there's, like, literally, a pot of money, and that's not the case. It's not money that's sitting there. It's tied to specific developers and development projects.
It allows us to get the money.
Yeah.
From the state.
It's very confusing. It is confusing.
But the thing that St. Albans did, which I liked, was the town, basically, like Stuart just said, moved that project, and they were a bigger player. And they're very successful because they now have a hotel, they have a parking garage, they have a hardware store, and there's a couple of other things, I think, what you alluded to. And by the town taking control of it, working with the citizens and the TIF, they took that 43 million, they developed the property, they then got people in, bought the property back, yada, 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 from what I understand from people talking to up there and reading the material they sent to me. So, we've taken two years now on this project, and nothing has happened downtown. I think everybody is waiting to see whether it goes or it doesn't go, and I think it's you guys' responsibility to say to them, do it or get off the, you know, because we're tying up that property, and somebody might else want to come in and develop it.
Do you have a comment?
Well, Stuart, can you correct some misinformation that might be out there? The TIF money can't be used for private investment. We can't use that money to give, it has to be used on infrastructure, correct?
It has to be, yes, public infrastructure improvements. That's the only thing you can spend it on.
And I think part of the beauty of it is, it worked in St. Albans for the way, the way that project came together, but there are many other ways that things can happen, and that's one of the beauties of it, is that it's flexible. So, just because it happened that way in St. Albans doesn't mean it's good, bad, or indifferent. It's just one way to use the structure.
Right. But if that way was successful, I think we all.
And that doesn't mean that we won't be successful. We might do it differently and still be successful.
Mike, we have to wrap this up.
Thank you.
But I think it's, you know, TIF is a really important tool, and glad we have that, but the question, how we use it and when we use it, I think that's really in the, in the future. But I like to not have it too far in the future either.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Thanks. We do have, as the next item, appointments to boards and commissions. Earlier, the Select Board minus the Chair, I think, everybody else there? My apologies. My client will pay dearly. Would someone have a motion for appointment to the boards and commissions? How do you want to do this, Tom? Do you want to do this all at once? Maybe you've. Do you want to do it by board? Why don't we do it by board? That's maybe helpful. So, I guess, do we, we would make a, should we start with a Development Review Board? There's two positions open, and I think Robert has pulled his name from consideration, so.
Of course you want me to.
Of course we want you, Robert, but maybe for something else. So, I guess I'd make a motion that Charles Cough and Barry Hurst be. Reappointed? Reappointed?
Second. Go ahead.
I'm going to let Vice Chair. Okay. So, second. Any discussion? Do we, we don't do discussion on this. All in favor? Abstention? One abstention. On the Historic Preservation Commission, we have two positions open.
Now, those were filled last time, Donald.
They were filled last time, you're right. On the Housing Authority, we interviewed a couple of great candidates. We have to unfortunately pick one. I think I'd make the motion that we reappoint Kristi Papoun and elect Paul Walden to a five-year term. Anyone second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay, abstention? One abstention.
Oh, yes, thank you.
Board of Listers, we did that, right?
Yeah, we appointed the one position. There is one position remaining open. We will most likely try to fill that position at the June 11th Select Board meeting, probably with an executive session and interviews beforehand.
Okay, so the rest of these have been filled, right? Yeah, Planning Commission, Regional Commission.
We do have one position open on the Regional Commission. We've reappointed Dan Monks, but there still remains one position open.
And your applicant? Nick to the Planning Commission.
We don't have any applicants at this time.
Okay. Good. Thank you. Now, we have a look-forward-to presentation from the Grove Bennington Initiative. And Zirbat, are you leading us on?
Sorry, I'm there with you. It's not a good sound. I'm sorry, it doesn't use the particular. Apparently, my hands are too small.
Is there a?
No, it's just, we have something that is actually not necessary for this particular computer. Yeah, it's just.
Is it broken?
Is that? No. We're on a municipal timeline.
Do you want the elevator music?
Um, Zirbat Children, the Community Development Director, and Industrial, and also, I also work with Lynn Green, Dan Monks, and others in the Grove Bennington Initiative. And I'm here today to provide the town with a quick update about flowers. And, that's weird, that's not going. There you go. Okay, great. So, I'm here to provide the town with an update about Merchants Park and some of the planning that we've been doing for this particular site. So, I'll kind of just go through a quick presentation about, you know, where, you know, the park as it is right now, what are some of the thoughts about it, what process has been, what the process has been until now in coming up with a plan for the park, what are some of the steps that we're envisioning for the future, and then I'm happy to answer questions as well. So, Merchants Park, as many of you know, is a point 3-4 acre lot in downtown Bennington. It's just north of Putnam Square, Four Corners, and it was donated to the town in 2014 by Merchants Bank when they relocated to their new location. So, I'm just going to talk, tell you a little bit more about how some of these ideas have come about. Right now, the park is mainly used as an open lawn. I think a lot of people like to use it to make short, take shortcuts between North Street and Pleasant Street. In the summer, there is a Tuesday Farmer's Market that convenes there, and as you can see, again, it's a really.
Not anymore, no.
Sorry?
Not anymore, sorry.
Not, thank you, Donald. I never, I didn't know if they were coming back this year. But also, in the past, I think there have been outdoor concerts. I know that the Bringing of Vermont does outdoor movie screening, or film screenings there in the summer. So, it's a space that has been in use off and on, but has a lot of potential, because as you can see here, with its really prime downtown location, and it's adjoining parking space that, you know, a lot can be done with this particular space. Again, as you can see, like, you know, in the past, there have been vendors' markets there, so some of this is a matter of how do we bring this activity into a more regular calendar. So, one of the reasons why the park has come into the attention of the town in this particular moment, or there are two main reasons for this. One, it's already been identified as part of the Bennington Downtown Alliance's Design Committee's Spark Program, which is, John can, I can never remember the acronym.
Spaces?
Spaces.
Parks?
Parks.
Arts?
Arts. Recreation?
Recreation.
Uh, and there's.
Community.
And community, yes, community, part of my job. And so, Spark, so the Spark, the map on the left there highlights some of the green spaces in downtown Bennington, and the Spark, I guess, design is about how to activate these spaces and make more accessible, walkable, enjoyable green spaces in downtown Bennington. So, the first, one of the first projects on that list is the park at 336, which hopefully is going to, going to construction this summer. Merchants Park was also on that list, and in 2014, soon after the park was donated to the town, the Design Committee of the Bennington Downtown Alliance even held a publicuret held a public charrette with almost 30 people just to field some early ideas and questions about what could be done with that space. More importantly, I think, a bit more directly related to my role in the town, on the right, you'll see a map that the BRCRC did, put together very generously for the town. And it shows some of our parks, town park facilities, and their proximity to high-density residential neighborhoods. Because if we're going to talk about walkability, accessibility, one important resource for us is what is actually within walking distance of our facilities. And as you can see, one of our main resources until now, and still now for obvious reasons, is the wonderful Willow Park. Willow Park, of course, as many of you know, is not within easy walking distance of, as you can see, most of our residential neighborhoods. But of course, it's a really wonderful resource. It's really close to the schools. On the other hand, we do have the Rec Center, obviously Merchants Park, Stark Street Playground, Beach Street, Beach Street Ball Field, is that what it's called? All within kind of closer concentric circles of some of these high-density neighborhoods. So the hope is, how do we make use of these great locations and these facilities that we have? So this in some ways brought us into the question of Merchants Park, which again, is really prime, as you can see in all of these maps, in terms of its downtown location, proximity to residential neighborhoods, commercial spaces. But also, there were several community groups that had already begun to take an interest about some of the things that could be done at Merchants Park. So as I mentioned, on the left is the Bennington Downtown Alliance's Design Committee did a charrette, identified some of the possible, you know, strengths, challenges to this current site. So for example, there is an existing canopy of the site. How could that be used for any future development? As part of the Spark programming, how could there be a water feature? Because all of the Spark parks will have a water feature. So there's a kind of continuity and theme to it. Is there a way to involve an artist in the design and creating art for the space as well? And of course, ADA accessibility. So a few different things, as you can see. And also a question of, you know, like, how do we, given that it's such a central downtown location, how do we use it both as a resource for people who live in Bennington, but also how do we make it attractive to visitors? Added to that was input from a series of, I believe they were called community cafes, that were central to the creation of what is called a Promise Community in Bennington, and that now is, has been folded into the more kind of organizational umbrella of Catamount Connections. And I'm really delighted to see three members of Catamount Connections here today. And I particularly want, I want to particularly thank them because I know that we don't necessarily provide childcare at our meetings. And the fact that these three women have sat aside their kids at home and come and joined us in support of this, I think we should really be thankful and commend them for doing that. So thank you. But one of the things that came up in these community cafes that was about workshopping with families and getting their input about what are the resources that they need and need to have access to in Bennington. And I think open park spaces that are friendly to their children, that allow that, families to interact not only with their kids, but also with each other, was really something that came up at several of these meetings. And I put this drawing up because I don't know how clearly you can see it, but the need for green space, and in particular, over here, was a very cute drawing for some kind of a water feature splash pad for kids as well. So this is something that came up over and over again. Kayla Becker from the Motherhood Collaborative and Catamount Connections conducted a survey with several of the families involved in this group, and, you know, just got, tried to get their input about what kinds of park facilities would you even like to see. And again, the splash pad kept coming up, or the water feature kept coming up in some of these surveys. And then finally, the Grow Bennington Initiative, Lynn couldn't have timed it better with her update this evening, listed, you know, a fun, interactive, vibrant, creative downtown playground as a really crucial, like, you know, useful tool in both adding vibrancy to the downtown, but also attracting visitors local and from outside to the downtown area. And so it seemed, you know, just as, you know, we have these concentric circles in this other map, it seemed like there were these concentric circles forming around these different community groups' interests. And the question was, how can we have, can we have a facility that's within easy access to, you know, is easily accessible to people, and that also complements some of this downtown vision that the Grow Bennington Initiative has, you know, really made front and center for us as well. So just also, there are other community enthusiasts. I think some of you will recognize Jim Sullivan there, looking very happy, playing with his grandchild at a splash pad. Robyn Stromgren very generously shared this video of herself at a splash pad in Amsterdam. And again, as you can see, you know, they're not, they're very urban downtown-type features as well. And again, like, I think there's been some confusion about whether this is a big water park, or, you know, what exactly is a splash pad. And since I'm not very good at definitions, I found one from the Roger Brooks Institution, or the Institute that Lynn very generously shared with me. And it's a flush, they're flush-mounted fountains that can be turned off when space is occupied for other use. So as you can see in these photographs, they're often really integrated into plaza-type environments, so that there's something that's both visually stimulating and engaging, but that is also fun for kids to interact with. So, you know, they're, instead of splash pad, which has, you know, sort of ambiguous meaning, I encourage you to think in terms of an interactive water feature and an interactive water fountain even. And again, that they can really be of varying scale and are often really best deployed in somewhat of some intimate, you know, intimate-scale settings like this. Again, another downtown splash pad, I think where this one was in San Antonio, was it? So you can see, like, suddenly, once this discussion began, I was starting to get photographs of, like, exciting splash pads, you know, or interactive water features across the country, but in these similar-type settings as what we have at Merchants Park. You know, kids are playing around while, you know, their parents are eating lunch, or their caregivers are eating lunch. They're often, you know, adjoining small park spaces or a lawn space. And really, this is about, like, you know, you might come in and enjoy the water feature, but also if you want to grab lunch afterwards, you can walk over to the sandwich shop or to the cafe and do that as well. I know another matter that has been brought up with regards to Merchants Park is, the location is both an advantage, but it's also right next to some traffic because of North Street and Pleasant Street. And I just wanted to also give some examples of how, you know, it's really important that we're considering some of these factors. But the great thing about exploring a project like this right now is that there are so many places across the country, across the world, that have undertaken projects like this successfully. And I think one survey that was done of every, or various communities that have these water features, none of them regretted putting one in. So there's never been a, like, don't do it. I think it's important that we be wise about how we sign onto a project like this, but there's definitely been no voicing of regret. But I wanted to show this small video of the interactive water fountain at Boston's Greenway Park. And as you can see, it's right next to, like, a really busy thoroughfare. And there are, I think, really interesting and creative ways in which they've created visual barriers between the road and the splash pad site itself. So the kids, and honestly, like, kids are going to be way more excited about splashing water than running cars. But I think we can certainly take steps to ensure that those barricades are created. Another example, so this is another photograph of the one in Boston. On the right, I think, is a slightly different one. But again, you can see there are many locations which are, you know, next to traffic and parking and use these really interesting strategies, whether it's seeding, whether it's plantings, to create some of that visual barrier and physical barrier as well. Another one, this one is in Portland, Oregon. As you can see, you know, this is a little water feature. The kid is running through there. It's right next to the metro train tracks, actually. So an important factor with this is, you know, we just don't want this, you know, water feature to become the only, like, thing going on at this park. And we also want it to be something that is attractive, maybe during the evenings as well, perhaps with some kind of a lighting element. And also that, you know, in the winter months, we want this park to be an active, interesting space. So it's not just a summer park. You know, one of the possibilities, and again, this isn't, none of this is set in stone yet, but is, what are the ways in which we can take advantage of its transformation into a more active plaza-type site as well? So could there be a Christmas tree? Could there be, like, winter concerts? I don't know. These are just some of the questions that we're exploring. So just to give you a sense of where we are now, in light of, you know, the charrettes, the design charrette that the Bennington Downtown Alliance did in 2014, the new feedback that we've received from these various groups and organizations in town, we've begun a conversation with architect Jeff Goldstone about what is the best way to use this space, really to be attentive to the scale of the park, but also to take advantage of its excellent downtown location. So on the left is my wizardry with some Photoshop, giving you a sense of what a splash pad in there might look like. And on the right is quite literally almost like a napkin sketch equivalent of a design that Jeff Goldstone put together after another charrette that he did at his office, just to explore some of the ideas. So some of the thoughts are, this is Pleasant Street, North Street, could we, you know, use the splash pad not so much at the side, but really use it to an advantage in the middle and create, like, pathways around it? What kind of seeding and planting could be explored nearby? Could there be potential art installations on these sides? But again, this is all very early-stage planning of, like, what are the possibilities? The great thing about this is that we do have a professional architect guiding us through this process as well. And we have wonderful community members who are, you know, who've been working really hard and tirelessly to get input about what really is a good resource for the community. So crucially, of course, the question is, how are we paying for any of this? And this is where the Grow Bennington Initiative has been such a key, is playing such a key role. Lynn, would you like to tell us a little bit more about the fundraising?
Yeah. Well, I think that this is so incredibly exciting. But I think a lot of the vision that we're putting out there really comes down to how much money we can raise. And in our initial conversations we've had with different companies in town, people have been so receptive to supporting Grow Bennington, to kind of give this a try and do the lights and do the banners. But to get this done, we're going to need to reach out more and just do a grassroots fundraising. And that's just one-on-ones with all of our fellow citizens, fellow companies, et cetera. So I think the scale of what we can do will be a factor of how much money we can raise. I think the other important thing is that we do have Kayla here from Catamount Connections, and she has really put the seed money up to get this started. And so it will be probably in some phases. So it might just be one component early on, and then some other components as we go. And that's kind of the, how Grow Bennington has done everything. We'll do one project, then the next project, the next project. So this project might be sliced into phases, just because we want to get some visible results. We want to create the feeling that something's happening here early, and then just build on it and build on it. So does that answer?
So that's basically where we are right now. But I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. You know, what are the directions, what are the possibilities?
Yep. The taxpayer's going to say, how much is this going to cost me to install and to maintain? Have we gotten to that point yet, Lynn or Zirwot?
That you can help?
Yeah. So I mean, this is kind of one of the reasons why we began this conversation both with Grow Bennington, with Catamount Connections, is that, you know, initially, when we started getting this kind of community feedback about this project, it wasn't just like, can the town build this? It was about, we would like to support this as well. And as Lynn said, you know, the Catamount Connections has really provided a lot of seed money towards this project as well. And so I think what we're hoping is, I've been applying for grants nonstop in the hope that this is not going to come out of taxpayer money, but out of grant funding, out of fundraising efforts. I mean, I feel like I'm working with two fundraising wizards on this, so I have a lot of confidence in their ability. But that's exactly, it is like, this project is not going to happen unless those efforts are successful. So, you know, it's not like we've ordered, you know, a water fountain and the town is on the hook for it. If anything, we have a very generous community organization that wants to, you know, put a significant amount of money towards this, and can we match that?
What's the estimated cost of the overall?
Of the.
Of the pound?
Kind of depends on how far you go. I mean, Zirwot has some costs for just the splash pad component. But we felt like this is a downtown park. We want to really make the whole thing, you know. So we're working with Jeff Goldstone, who I have to mention, did donate his time.
Yes.
This early phase, which is really hard. So I think when we get his, he'll help us with some further estimates. I mean, you have him for the actual splash pad part. But then there's that beautiful alley, little promenade, there's the stage, there's benching, there's lighting, there's plantings, and we could go. I mean, in our research, they're anywhere from $150,000 to, you know, $3 million. We're not going there.
Having that in mind, is the Merchants Park a requirement, or was that required as part of the acceptance of the gift that it remained Merchants Park?
No, no, the merchant, the name has stayed with the property simply because Merchants donated it. And it's not an official name. So part of what the proposal is here is ultimately to come up with a way to potentially name, name the park or name the features of the park for a period of time in exchange for major donations. So I, we are not constrained by the gift. We could not resell it for five years. That was the only constraint. We weren't going to be given it and then turn around and sell it for commercial development.
Can't use it for banking purposes either.
Or for banking purposes. Very good.
Carson?
Thank you for the presentation. I just had some questions and comments. I guess I'll start. I had a chance to talk to Zirwot a few agendas ago, and I just took some notes here. I had some personal confusion in respect to the water feature. And I thank you for going into detail on that because I was, to the point of, I actually sat with Stuart and said, you know, I have some serious concerns about Merchants Park becoming kind of a water park. And my ignorance was quickly put in check, and I thank you all for that. I thank Lynn for taking a minute to sit with me on it. And the visual, I hope, helps everyone because there, you know, I won't be as broad in saying, there was a ripple across the community where we thought we were going to put a water park down there. But the messaging that kind of came across my deck was far more of a water park versus what I see as a concrete slab that can be used in a lot of different fashions and offers some unique water abilities.
That's a new definition. That's it. There's going to be like a consulting group that's going to start using your definition.
Well, it's just something where.
Concrete slab with concrete.
You know, I even went as far as sending some examples of what I was envisioning in my mind. And, you know, if it was in my mind, why wouldn't it be in other people's? You know, I just, I hear water feature, and I, I don't want to go as far as thinking Six Flags. But, I mean, it was something where I was thinking more involved in the architectural abilities of a park like that do a lot of different things than what I was thinking. So that was just one piece.
I am flattered, though, that you think I can stretch the space that much.
I just want to say, I stand corrected on that. And thank you.
Thank you.
And then kind of building off that, I think there are fundraising opportunities that exist in it. I sat with Lynn. We went through some of those. I think you guys are working in a great direction. Similar to our role on this board, we think about the taxpayers and the cost. And it's not necessarily the building cost, but it's a long-term cost and how that are going to impact the community. So I know that needs to be part of the conversation because how great is it to get a building or a park donated to an institution, and then all of a sudden, you can't afford it, you know, down the road? And I don't think that's fair for anyone. And the last piece is, just kind of this, you opened the conversation with it, but can we add to a future agenda the park at 336? The status of that and where we're going with construction, I don't want to say funding-wise on it, but I think kind of a feather in the cap might be, you know, as we talk about the second park, where's the status of the first park? And I don't know any of the details on it. So just maybe if we could add that. I don't know who even to look at when I make that request, but here, is it John? So John, if you could just, if we could add that to an agenda and get a real detailed update as far as when a shovel's going to hit the ground there and kind of, I think it's, they're related, I guess.
Go ahead, John, if you'd like to just give sort of an update.
Actually, a quick update, you know, I'll take that spot.
Yeah.
It's down between, we're with Steve as our contractor.
I'm not sure if anybody can, can you hear him at home?
No. We don't need to do this now. I mean, I would love to have it as detailed.
Because I had the same rest of this, and I've heard people.
And I'm not prepared with the dates and time because the next conversation is between Steve, who's acting as our contractor, as well as, Steve Tatro, I'm sorry, doing the cement work, and RJ, picking the date to put the shovel in the ground. And then Mike McDonough doing, we've had to make some changes to the retaining wall, so he worked with Steve on that last week. And now it's down to just picking a date to start. Fundraising is all completed. We've raised all the money we need, and our, our goal is if we come in under cost, the remaining funds are going to go to Merchants Park. So we should know that within a month or so, what we'll have, if we have, which we think we will have additional funds that we can use toward Merchants.
And I didn't know that you were the point person. I mean, I guess I had some indication, but completion date for that park?
I don't have a date for completion. I'll know that probably. I shouldn't even be the one saying this. The contractor should be. But the completion date is before the end of the season. I just don't know an exact date. Steve Tatro in a couple of weeks will be able to give us a completion date.
Could we add that to, just to kind of put some feet to the fire, can we add that to the agenda next meeting to get an answer on those questions? And then you can go to Steve and RJ and ask, you know, we need an answer to.
I don't want to answer for Steve. I'd say, yes, we can put on the agenda. I'll let Steve know, but I'm going to leave that up to Steve and RJ to answer.
Yeah. Why don't we have? Yeah, why don't we have Stu and RJ work any agenda or even just a report?
It's exciting. It's great news.
It's nice to see, yeah. Get done.
Listening to the information about the splash pad and also the park 336, I have a special education degree, and I think the splash pad in particular is going to be phenomenal for people, children, with any kind of disability because it's all ADA compliant. It's just going to be fabulous for that population. That's the first thing I thought of.
Yeah, thank you.
And the other part, too?
I'm an enthusiastic supporter of this. I think it's going to be fantastic for kids, especially this 56-year-old kid. And I think it's going to be a romantic setting if it's lit at night and a great place for couples to come and sit and just enjoy the sound of running water. I think it's going to be a beautiful setting, and it's going to be such a magnet for little kids and parents bringing their little kids into the downtown to, and, you know, those little kids are going to get hungry.
Yes.
And mommy and daddy are going to have to take them somewhere to get something to eat.
You are onto my scheming, Jim.
There might be a hot dog cart somewhere adjacent to that area.
Is that a comeback? Okay. Thank you very much for coming and presenting. I'm in the same campus, Carson, a little bit. That first picture that circulated looked a little bit more like a circus or something, you know, the colors and whatnot, and it looked like it belonged at the rec center and not in our downtown. So this idea of sort of interactive sculpture, you know, is really, it's more like art that you can play in, seems really consistent with our downtown. So I'm very, very excited about it also. And Zirwatt, one of the things that's been great about watching you take on this job over the past year is how well you pull together partnerships. So it feels to me like that's one of your great strengths and one of the things you're really doing for the town. So it's great that you're here with the Catamount Connections people, and I'd just like to leave space. If one of them would like to talk about how this fits into their goals or their sort of aspirations for the community, I don't mean to put you, put pressure on you, but if one of you would like to tell us a little bit about why this is a priority or why you thought this would be a good idea, I'd love to hear it.
Hey, Dan, will you put the lights on?
Everybody come up. Feel free to...
Hi, I'm Kayla Becker, and I'm with...
I'm Valerie Coulter.
And our vision for the splash pad, I will be honest and say that I have enjoyed splash pads in other communities where I lived with my young children, pictured one with my dad and my son. And when we moved back to Bennington, it was just one thing that I was hoping could become a reality. So when we got this opportunity to receive the Promise Community Grant, which was $150,000 to help children and families thrive, it seemed like a great opportunity to see if the community also had that vision, and they did. So with Zirwatt's help of figuring out where it could be, I'm just really excited that so many families will get to enjoy it.
Yeah. I mean, we went up for a couple of different trainings, and one of our first, you know, drawings of what this $150,000 could do for Bennington had a splash pad involved in it, had a place for kids and families to come in a downtown green space and just be together because every family here feels like they're their own silo and they don't feel like they're connected. And that's what Catamount Connections is trying to accomplish, is creating a community place.
It's also within close walking distance to our new location, 504 Main Street, so an open gathering place for families and caregivers to connect and find both resources in the community, but also resources with each other, definitely getting people together both inside, at the space, and then in the many outdoor locations that we're going to have.
Does that grant have to be used by any time?
It does.
Yes.
Yes, it does have to be used by December 31st, 2018.
Great. That's a little incentive. Yeah, we love grants that happen quickly.
Yeah.
Could I just ask a question? You said $150,000?
Yeah.
And has to be used by 12/31?
Yeah.
Is, can you just tell us, maybe, I don't know if it's public or not, but can you tell us $150,000? Are you dedicating X amount to the splash pad, or is $150,000 going towards it?
So we have a chunk of money donated towards the splash pad.
Is that...
It's not $150,000.
It's $26,000.
It's $27,000. $27,000 is the initial budget line item. We, if the need arose, we could go back to the state team and see if we could make adjustments to that, but that's $27,000 that was approved for purchase of splash pad equipment.
The rest of that, do you want to talk about? I mean, that budget allowed you to open the center and to have, and pay rent, so pay rent, hire staff, sort of open Catamount Connections, and then, and then a piece of that was the interactive, yeah, programming and then interactive water feature.
Yeah, the interactive water feature. And everything that we did was guided by these community cafes, as Zirwatt mentioned, which were held through the summer, they were public, had a lot of parents come and talk about what's great about the community and what would be ideal to have added to the community. And that created the roadmap, the vision for how we spent the $150,000.
And we also have 1,200 moms on the Vermont Motherhood Collaborative that have been openly speaking about what Bennington needs to us for over two years now.
What's the likelihood of getting that money granted to you again?
Uh, no. No.
So funding next year turns to what source?
That's my job. I mean, partnerships and exploring and, that's my job. I, yeah, if anybody has any great ideas and wants to support it, I'll tell you all about us.
Sounds like Zirwatt, you might make a good team.
Yeah, no, yeah, we see each other often, so.
I'm particularly taken by the part of your effort that really wants to try to bring people closer together in this day and age when everyone feels like people are being driven further and further apart. It's great that you're making a concerted effort to bring, you know, specific families together in nice places in our community. So thank you both very much for that.
I'll state it.
And no barriers, truly. It's open to anyone, no questions asked, come in and learn something new about somebody else.
I'd just like to bring up one point about this, and I was just thinking here about it. This is not going to be an open system where water is just going to run endlessly. It's going to be like a pool filter. Is that correct? That's the research that I've found.
There are two styles, and I've, Zirwatt has been amazing at doing the research and logistics of it, but yes, that is one of the options. I'm not sure.
So it's recycled and re-filtered water, just like a pool?
Either, yeah, either like the town water supply or recycled, so you either have it come in and go out or you can keep it.
So we'll wait and hear what you come up with. That's exciting. Thank you.
Good. And you're going to probably hear from the community about this Six Flags thing going in downtown Bennington, if we can get the message out that it's a water feature, it's not a place for, I got the same reaction first. You know, they have tubes and all that kind of thing. But I don't think the people like at the clip shop or, you know, fiddler, fiddlers or whatever it is, fiddleheads would be happy if they saw that kind of stuff going on. But I think this seems like a very attractive downtown amenity, which along with all the other things that are happening there, really has a really great opportunity to get folks down and using our assets together.
So happy you spot it.
It is a happy spot. Sorry, Jean, I didn't mean to...
No, it's all good. I want to go back, I guess, to Lynn and Zirwatt. I have a question for you guys. I'm just wondering, and thank you guys.
Thank you.
I'm just wondering, so is there a sense of how to break this? Are there, is it too early to know sort of what chunks, sort of park development, Merchants Park development might take so that, is there a phase one, two, and three in terms of what you're thinking? Or is it, are we still in the early stages so that it's not clear sort of what pieces get clumped together?
I think I'm more comfortable once we see what Jeff brings to us. I mean, we've really gone at lightning speed with working with him. And also just, you know, launching now the fundraising effort, and I don't know if it's going to be, everyone's so excited that they can't wait to contribute, or if it's going to be an uphill battle. So I think in a few weeks, we might have a little better sense of that.
So I'm thinking, I mean, with the interactive water feature, that, that money has to be spent, so that means it needs to be in the ground by December and obviously earlier so that, I mean, is there a sense of what, what that, I mean, are we talking $100,000 to get that first piece?
So again, like, you know, I think it's a question of even the splash pads, right, are how, or how elaborate do you want to be with them and how simple, how simply do you want to do it? So I think it's a, really, I wish I didn't have to dance around this so much, but I think we could do something really sparse and simple for maybe $60,000, but we could also do something, not just sparse and simple, but a bit more active for maybe $100,000. But that's where like, you know, it grows at these, like, sort of in leaps. It's not like 60 or 70, it's like 60 or 90.
Okay, because it's not really chunks then, it's really sort of how elaborate, what each piece, yes, but it's also what each piece looks like.
If you notice all of her pictures, some were just very simple tile work, some were mosaic, some were, so it's both the amount of water features and the totality of those water features, but it's also the tile work, the concrete, concrete work. I mean, there are a lot of options there, and that's what I think Jeff is helping us with a little bit, is the aesthetics of it. So that's one piece of it, just for the water feature. But then there's also that beautiful LA that kind of goes, I see it's a beautiful alley, where the tree-lined side of the park, there's the stage, I mean, lighting. We've shown some pictures of the water feature being lit. Clearly, that's more expensive than one that's not lit.
Okay, yeah, so, yes, it's definitely more complicated than I was thinking it was in my head.
So Jean, just to add quickly, though, I think what you were saying in terms of phasing, I mean, there's a question of like, just in terms of the items that are going into Merchants Park? I think the number one priority is the splash pad because of the funding deadline. But, you know, if the fundraising is able to go off in a direction, it could be the splash pad. And I think it's going to be really important to establish some of those visual barriers with the streets. It could be like the seating planters, would it be, you know, so, and then phase three might be, you know, some of the more kind of aesthetic improvements, whether it's LA and the kind of brickwork on that or tilework on that.
But it seems like there's the, I mean, so the other complication is sort of getting, the decisions have to be made in time to actually do the work before the ground freezes, right? So there is some, there's a deadline of a sense in terms of how much money we can raise in determining what the water feature looks like.
Right, and that's, and that's really what I'm hoping the drawing on the right will lead to is much more of a concrete plan of, and, you know, we were very clear with Jeff about the kind of deadlines that we're working with, and, you know, can he give us a final plan that will be like, here are the, what you, here's what you need for steps one and two, and then three and four will cost this much and that much. So I mean, I think we do have, you know, we, we can make, you know, we can choose in that, like, you know, we obviously pick, like, what kind of a decorative splash pad do we even want? But I think the nice thing about, you know, my not having to now get an architecture degree on the side is that I can direct those questions to the architect on the project.
And all four of the groups that Zirwatt listed, we all agree that the number one priority is to get that splash pad component in the ground before you're in because of the generous donation from Catamount Connections, which has to be...
Yeah, so RJ is going to be very busy this summer.
So it has to actually be built? I mean, couldn't you spend the money on engineering costs and other things and meet the requirements of the grant?
I mean, we are looking at all of that.
Okay.
Exactly what you get done.
I guess I don't want to see you rush if you don't have to just to spend the money. There's other, you're going to have other bills to pay unfortunately that you could possibly use that money for.
Right. So I think, again, Jean, I'm really glad you brought that up because it's exactly that is like, the parent, the families, the caregivers have been like, we want a splash pad.
Yes, that I understand, yes, yes.
So they don't want it to pay other...
But they're not going to be using a splash pad in December.
That's true. But I think like, knowing that it's going to be in place and now available, and we're not going to have to go through that whole cycle again.
Oh, believe me, I'm one of the most impatient people I've ever met, so.
So, yeah. And I, may I just add a quick line to?
Please.
No, I really appreciate your words of support, but I would also just like to say that, you know, when I came into this position, I heard a lot of like, Bennington is fatigued in many ways, we've gone through many transformations, and I can't tell you how important it has been for me to work with people like Kayla, Lonnie, Valerie, Maru, and Lynn, who, you know, they come up, they make a lot of work for me, but they are there, you know, they're like, what can we do to help you? And what are the things that we can do to make this community a better place? And I find a lot of encouragement in reminding myself that there are lots of very different voices that make the public in Bennington, and I, it is a tremendous honor to work with these women.
Chad?
I don't have any questions. I just want to commend you all for your collaboration. It's exciting to see. I'm excited for this park. And as these questions arise, I see that you guys, you know, you look for the opportunity in every obstacle that comes up. And it's unfortunate, too many times people look for the obstacle in every opportunity. So I appreciate that you really are looking for those opportunities, so thank you.
Well said. You, Grow Bennington Initiative is so special, but, you know, you're carrying a lot of water yourselves. If folks are interested in participating either in the fundraising or some venture, who do they contact? Is it Zirwatt or Lynn? How would you like to?
We have a GoFundMe page if individuals want to contribute. It's gofundme.com/crowbenningtoninitiative. But they can contact me or John Shanahan would be the best contacts. And then we would love to sit down with anyone interested in contributing and helping to make this happen. So I'm at the Four Chimneys, I guess, oh, you know what? My contact information is on our website, which is, hangs off of the Better, the Bennington Downtown Alliance website. So if you go to the Bennington Downtown Alliance website, John Shanahan's website, ours is on there, and my contact information is on there.
Thanks very much for your presentation. It's exciting, and it's all part of that, really making it happen in Bennington.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is...
Manager's report.
Stu, you have the floor.
Thank you. When you sat down tonight, you found a number of things on your desk. One is the water and sewer funds budgets, which we'll be taking up on June 2nd, but I wanted to hand it to you this evening to give you plenty of time to review it. The other is a narrative and analysis of the community-built park, which is now, I think, 16 years old.
Wow.
And we've, we've got some concerns about upgrading it, renewing it, all of those things, whether or not we do wood or the new high-grade plastic parts, we don't know. We wanted to give you this. This is a compilation of all of the information that Valerie McCloud and Mark Sawyer have pulled together, and it gives you some idea of the scope of the project, the cost of the project, and that's for your reading pleasure at some other time. But at some point, we will need to address what is happening to that facility. For your, tonight, I have one liquor license that came in this morning. D's Market in Delhi on East Road is being, is being sold to a couple, and it needs to have a new liquor license. I would present this to you and just circulate it for your signatures. It appears to check out very well, and so I'll do that. And then I have one action item, which is actually kind of a fun action item from my perspective. We're seeking a, Jeffrey Cameron and Robin Molen, who live up in the Harbor Road area, Seer Court, Rutter Road, are seeking permission to close a portion of those roads for a party on August 18th, wherein from 5:30 until 11:30 p.m., they will be celebrating the renewal of their wedding vows with family, friends, and neighbors. That's kind of a neat thing, but we do need to formally, as the board, you need to formally allow them to close the road. They've given you an idea of what they hope to do and how they hope to do it. As I noted, the neighbors have all been invited. They're making arrangements for parking off-site for shuttle service to the party. So I think it's a great opportunity for a very individual event, and I wish them the very best.
Is there any comment, or I guess I'll entertain a motion, and this has to be in the form of a motion because we're, street closure, right?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve and happy anniversary.
Uh, second?
A second.
Um, you know, I think this is great, wonderful, but you know, are we setting a precedent here that, you know, we're, um, other neighbors or other folks around town are going to be celebrating their anniversaries and birthdays and they want to close? Do we have to deal with this every time?
Well, I, I think, you know, I think...
I'm a little concerned frankly.
Are you finding the obstacle and the opportunity here?
Exactly. So the next time that somebody asks, hey, how come you did, you know? Yeah, no, I understand. The obvious. And, you know, uh, if that's what the board wants, it's fine and I'll go along with it. But I want the world to know that the next time, if we have the next time, it comes before, um, a select board that I'm sitting on, um, I'm going to be more cautious, uh, because there are issues that go along with street closings. And I know they, they've done their best. Uh, so I'll be the curmudgeon, um, but I will not be the one that ends their renewal of their vows.
It does feel like we could, we could, I hate to always make everything about policy, but policy is a sort of note for fairness, you know, and, or sort of a fair way of applying something. It, it could be that we use this as an opportunity to talk about if future requests come, what we want to see. And it does look like they've addressed emergency safety. They've addressed, um, the, the permission from all neighbors, which seems like it would be a good step. Um, they've addressed, uh, shuttle, uh, shuttling people in so there's not a, a big parking problem. Um, so that, that would seem like it would address the kind of safety issues that, that might come up. I'm not sure what the other issues might be, but I'm sure you...
Well, it's a residential neighborhood, so it's not affecting any businesses that might be open. It's on a Saturday night.
I think not charging would be another, you know, another one.
I think, I tend to agree. I mean, maybe this is an opening for a, a policy that makes sense. I'm not sure. You probably don't get too many calls on this type of thing.
Uh, this is the first in twenty-five years.
Yeah, but I have a feeling.
Relatively rare.
This may be the first opportunity.
Maybe just put it in the minutes that this is, you know, sort of our expectation so that we don't get hit with, uh, lower, lower bar requests.
Understood.
All in favor?
Right. Oh, all in favor?
You can't vote yet. Any more discussion?
I'd, I'd like to see it done. I'd like to see it done more often.
Okay. There's season more discussion. That's, no, I know.
I would like to see, I would actively encourage, you know, neighborhoods getting together to have a block party.
I agree. Totally.
We did it all the time.
Yeah, it's whether or not you close off the street, the traffic.
And you can't do it like on our street because we have a nursing home. We, we can't do it. And that's completely reasonable.
Maybe we'll get into this one. All in favor? Say goodbye by eye?
Aye.
That's seven in favor. As I think Chad's...
Chad, you're in favor.
Chad's in favor. Yeah. Record, it's like that. Okay.
That's all I have.
That's it. Thanks. Um, other business to come for the board tonight? Um, Chad, are you ready? Any others?
Um, I, I did have something.
You'll come back to you if you think about it.
With the, um, I'll look over the park, but I know, um, in other communities, we talked about, um, the outdoor fitness people, you know, there's some obstacle stuff for adult, um, playground stuff. So maybe something to look into.
So just to be clear, we're, so we're not meeting, uh, next Monday on Memorial Day? Then on June second, there's a morning board meeting scheduled for budgets?
Water and sewer.
Which I cannot attend. I'm sorry about that. And then on June fourth, um, we have charter. Are we holding that charter here?
Strictly a charter informational meeting.
Charter informational meeting. Okay. And then on to our regular meeting schedule after that. So the next one would be June eleventh.
Now, is everybody available on the second?
Yeah, can you go, I, what, June second, at what time, what day of the week?
June second, nine to twelve, is that right?
Oh, that's a Saturday.
Eight or nine to twelve, depending on how much time I think we're meeting.
Saturday. It's usually pretty customary. We do it right about that time. So.
Yeah. You're buying donuts.
Yep.
We'll, we'll make arrangements to have food. We're going to hold it here, just as we've done in the past. It gives, it gives the audience a little more room to, to settle in and participate or watch.
If we have any questions relative to the budget, they can be addressed in advance of the meeting. Please direct them to, not to their board, but to Stu so he can not be blindsided.
And then, so we are definitely going to do the hearing the night before the vote?
Yes, on Monday, sixth of fourth, six o'clock.
Okay.
And then the next week, Monday, June eleventh, we have a regularly scheduled select board meeting.
Thank you.
And then hopefully we'll be back to our normal twice, twice a month meeting for a time.
Okay. Great. That's, thank you.
Yep.
I can't believe we're talking about June. It's coming too fast. Other than that...
I actually have nothing.
Oh. Uh, the only question or concern I have is that I'm getting some folks are saying, when is this, um, Carmody across the street going to open? They're tired of seeing nothing happening on that sidewalk, which we basically gave them license for. Um, and someone said they walked up almost right into the, well, the wire or stuff and it was my wife. Uh, she wouldn't do that. I would. Um, it, I would like to have, when we do these things, that we have to give some thought to putting some timeframes because otherwise they're tying up basically community property. Um, and that's basically a message to the appropriate parties. So I...
I had them to speak with Madison this past weekend and, uh, informed me that they got the final loan that they needed to finish the interior and they're really pushing hard to be open by July.
That's what I want to hear. Thank you very much. Uh, we have a, we need for an executive session, uh, for a matter that's, uh, litigation. So if someone would move for an executive session, please...
Someone?
Second, second. We are now in executive session after a five-minute break.